Contribute to it and use it as an efficient platform for collaboration. We want to see governments, policy experts, the private sector and scientists play an equal and active role in this engagement. We have exciting sessions lined up in the press center, conference rooms nine and ten. Make sure you go there. We want to see you there and we want to hear you. We thank the business sector partners and the scientific bodies who contributed intellectually and financially to organize this event, which is 100% self-financed. They also flew from around the world to help us build this new platform and to be with you here, so please do interact with them. Now, I am delighted to introduce our moderator, Axel Threlfall, Reuters editor-at-large, who has been a great friend of UN Environment and who has taken time from his insane schedule covering global policy to be here with you. Axel Threlfall.
Thank you very much indeed, Shereen. Good morning, everybody. I guess if you were feeling a little bit sleepy when you came into the room after those drummers, you no longer are. It's a great pleasure for me to be, I guess, your emcee for the next hour and a half. And despite the gravity and the urgency of this subject, I can't tell you just how refreshing a change this is from covering Brexit or the US political environment. Of course, I met a few of you in Geneva last month at the Emissions Gap event, the science, I guess, behind all of this, which outlined quite starkly the challenges that we face on emissions. The headline there was clear enough. Despite the afterglow of Paris, the pledges made by governments cover about a third of reductions needed. Non-state actors need to step up and cover the remaining two-thirds. No doubt, that will be a big part of our conversations over the next few days. There is another reason this is high up on my radar. My kids are now asking me pretty much every week when we're going to get our electric car. I tell them it's going to happen. I tell them be patient. Prices are slowly coming down. I just need that to happen soon to get them off my back. No doubt, the cost of manufacturing EVs and things like that will also be a topic of discussion in some shape or form over the weekend. The format of today's session, I'll keep this very brief and we'll get to our speakers. The format of today's session might be a little bit different from what you're used to. It was pitched to me as a presidential-style debate meets the Oscars. And I was sat on the plane coming over here, trying to work out exactly what that was. My aim, I guess, is to keep it as lively and you as engaged as I can. We've got a superb lineup of speakers, all eager to have their views heard. And heard they will be because, and I think this is a critical message from the organizers, the format of this forum, the purpose of it, is to ensure that everybody has a voice here. Everyone has a sturdy seat at the table and everyone gets a say in the decision-making process. I guess the clue is in the title. We want to hear from scientists, from policymakers and from business, not separately, not from different conference rooms at high-level meetings. And that's why we've thrown everyone together under the umbrella of what's billed, as Shereen just said, as a UN-facilitated process, where everyone gets an opportunity to shape their own engagement. And that is very much what this is about. So we're going to start with some brief remarks from three opening speakers. After that, I'm going to invite other speakers in groups of three to come up to the stage and I will facilitate, hopefully, a very conversational, very lively, very interactive discussion with them. There'll be a representative from policy, from business and from science. I'll come to you as well for your intervention. So let's really try and keep the conversation lively and going for the next hour and a half. Our first speaker is UN Assistant Secretary-General and Deputy Executive Director of UN Environment, Ibrahim Chao. He will be followed by Peteri Talas, Secretary-General of the World Meteorological Organization. And after that, we'll hear from the President of the UN Environment Assembly, Edgar Gutierrez. Now, their opening remarks are going to be framed around the following question. I guess this is loose, but this is the question. How would you define a healthy and sustainable collaboration between the science, policy and business sectors? So first up, Ibrahim Chao.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Is it better than the previous speakers? So you may want to disconnect your mic, two mics. First of all, warm welcome to all of you. It's really wonderful to have this forum. I think this is the second time we are having a science policy forum in the context of the UN Environmental Assembly. But it is the first time that actually we are having it as a science, policy, business forum. It's a wonderful innovation. So my colleagues have asked me to think about green solutions and how these three main partners can come together. And what comes to my mind is an example coming first of all from China with Build Your Dreams as a company which is making an electric transport, solution to pollution. I can go to Kenya, where Philips is installing community life centers using a scalable self-sufficient model with solar power, solution to pollution. I can go to India, where IBM is helping the city of Bangalore, 10 million habitant, to monitor and manage water and waste systems. You can also see that in the Middle East, we have a number of companies and countries that are working together to bring down the cost of renewable energy. And we have seen wonderful examples coming from the United Arab Emirates in particular. Around the world, the European Space Agency and NASA are also providing satellite monitoring and data that is invaluable to assess flooding, deforestation, climate change, erosion and pollution. So this partnership, science, policy, business, is not only about hard money, it's also about data, it's about knowledge, it's about building partnerships. I could go on. But scientists essentially identify the issues. They identify what is it that we can do and they try to find solutions to these. Citizens would demand on their leaders to actually work on these solutions. Politicians and lawyers usually come to regulations. But until we get to the private sector to bring its own contribution, we have not closed that circle. So it is very important that we see it as an integrated way of cooperating. And that is exactly what the Sustainable Development Goals are all about. So of course, business will have to find opportunities. But business is not only about profits. Business is about vision. Business is about also contributing to solutions in the longer term, because short-term profit is not good business. We know that 60% of our infrastructure needed is needed for the coming decade. So we have a growing population and we have a growing population going to cities. So we'll need more cities that will be built in the future. We'll need more infrastructure to be built in the future. If you want to have a real example, think about Africa, where the population is estimated at 1.2 billion at the moment, they will grow to 4 billion at the end of the century. With the growing economy, you have a growing middle class. So you will have more infrastructure to build. The question is, what sustainability we will have to bring into that infrastructure? The fact is that sustainability is good for business, is good for jobs. Nearly a million people nowadays are employed for renewable energy, a million people in the world. In the US and in China, the sector is creating more new jobs than oil and gas. In Brazil, up to 800,000 people are employed for biofuels. In a country like Bangladesh, off-grid solutions to energy are transforming and creating over 4 million homes are being provided with energy and that is creating nearly 130,000 jobs. So what is good for the planet should be good for business. It is not either or. It is actually both. Good business should be good for the planet. What is good for the planet is good for business. So the Science Policy Forum that we are in today is providing us just that platform, green solutions. I would like to thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your attention and looking forward to interaction with you.
Thank you very much indeed. No, do take a seat. I'll invite you back up in a sec. Apologies if we've had a little bit of an issue with the sound, especially in the open. Our next speaker is Peteri Talas, Secretary-General of the World Meteorological Association. Come on up.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome also on behalf of WMO to this event. I just left five centimeters of fresh snow back in Geneva and I was happy to escape to this nice summer weather here. So thanks for organizers to organizing that as well. I also got my first electric car actually this week and I had this five centimeters of snow on the roof of my car when I was driving to the airport. So I'm representing World Meteorological Organization, which is a specialized agency on weather, climate and water of the UN system. And together with UNEP, we have, for example, established IPCC, which is providing the best scientific knowledge for the policymakers. I'm just coming back from Washington, where I spent early part of this week and we were discussing how to engage the private sector in the activities of WMO in this weather, climate and water business. And we're also dealing with air quality, which is a topic today. We published a couple of reports just before COP23 in Bonn, where we showed that we have been reaching the highest concentration of carbon dioxide in 3 million years and the annual growth last year was highest during the period that we have been measuring carbon dioxide. And last time, when carbon dioxide concentration was exceeding 400 ppm about 3 million years ago, I wasn't there to measure it, but somebody who has studied it have shown that temperatures were 2 to 4 degrees warmer than today and the sea level was 10 to 30 meters higher than today. We have also seen the temperature increase to continue. Temperature was boosted for the past two years by strong El Nino event, but if we filter out this impact of El Nino, we can see that this warming trend continues. And we have already reached 1.1 degree warming of temperature. And IMF just recently estimated what is the economic impact of this on global economy and it seems that the world is fairly uneven. The Southern Hemisphere, we have seen drops of GDP because of that already, whereas in the Northern Hemisphere, we have seen positive impacts. It's mainly due to increased temperature and precipitation in the Northern Hemisphere. We have also seen sea level rise of 26 centimeters so far, and that's because of warming of the oceans and thermal expansion of the oceans and melting of the glaciers. And especially the Greenland melting has been boosted recently. And we have also started seeing growing amount of disasters and actually this year we have been breaking several records also in that sense. The hurricane season in the Caribbean was record-breaking when it comes to the amount of category four and five hurricanes and also the economic losses. And this trend is continuing and that's fairly alarming, for example, for the insurance sector. When it comes to air quality, we can use satellites to measure the hotspots of poor air quality. And we have seen that we have the hotspots in some Asian countries like China, India, Pakistan, Indonesia nowadays. And then we have these classical hotspots in European countries, especially in Central Europe, and also on the east coast of United States. Then we have also air quality problems related to dust and sandstorms, and that's very much a problem in many African countries, especially in northern part of Africa, and we get these ultrafine particles. To cope with this air quality problem, we have to have besides satellites measurements that where we can see these long-term trends and hotspots, we need also institute measurements of air quality. And that's very much the duty of the national governments to take care of those. Private sector can contribute to that and enhance awareness and have some cheaper solutions as a short-term solution, but backbone should be in the hands of governments. And you need also to have measurements of meteorology and you have to be able to model the behavior of pollutants to go to the human exposure. And this is one of the major health challenges worldwide. And from our perspective, it's good that if you are able to solve both air quality and climate problems at the same times and, for example, these electric cars offer an opportunity to improve both air quality and at the same time tackle climate change, which remains to be the major long-term challenge. Although we have been facing out the growth of carbon dioxide emissions to the atmosphere, but because of the very long lifetime of thousands of years of carbon dioxide, we haven't seen an improvement in the atmospheric concentrations of carbon dioxide. And it's important that you understand it's a different thing to talk about concentration of carbon dioxide and emissions because of this long lifetime, which means a cumulative impact. With these words, I would like to welcome you all and we are very, very much looking forward to cooperation with the private sector, with the science community and also with our host, UNEP here. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. And you will see Peteri Talas again in one of the moderated discussions. Our final speaker before we get to those moderated groups is the President of the UN Environment Assembly, Edgar Gutierrez.
Buenos dias a todos, ladies and gentlemen. We are here gathered with the will to change the world, no less. Not because we are overly ambitious, but because we need to. To achieve sustainable development, we must grow green technology markets that are supported by sound science, regulatory and governance frameworks, timely policy interventions and green finance, having the agenda 2030 for sustainable development as a framework towards 2030. This in turn requires that we build bridges and meaningful collaboration between the worlds of policy, science and business in a manner that is efficient, collaborative and mutually beneficial. It is only when we succeed in doing that, and a lot of progress has already been made that needs to be acknowledged and celebrated, it is only then that we can achieve sustainable development that is economically, socially and environmentally viable. UN Environment's Science Policy Business Forum aims to strengthen the interfaces between these sectors, not only by tearing down traditional barriers through better communication, but also by encouraging opportunities to grow green technology markets and encourage the development of supporting regulatory and financial mechanisms. I salute the pioneering organizations, governments and businesses that supported the convening of this forum, not only as a series of events, but as a structure that offers an unprecedented opportunity to shape the interface between science, policy and business on equal footing and representing varying interests, expertise and points of views. Your contribution to the UN Environment Assembly in the coming years will help inform our decision-making and transform the way we do business to the better. We look forward to a robust forum and enduring partnerships. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much to all of our opening speakers for the brevity as well because we've got quite a lot to get through. Right, the presidential-style debate slash Oscars bit of this starts now and it should be fun. Let me invite our first three speakers up. I'll invite Peteri Talas back up to the stage along with Michael Karasik, Vice-President, Global Labs, IBM, and Arthur Ice from the Ministry of Environment at the Netherlands. These will be our first three speakers. Come on up. It appears we've only got two right now. If Mr. Ice wants to join us or can join us during this, please come on up. Let me kick it off though, and I'll kick it off, Michael, with you, because we've already heard something from Peteri. How does IBM see this relationship working, this three-pronged relationship? Is it working successfully? You know, how much more hard work really needs to be done on this?
Yeah, maybe the, if nobody minds, I'll just tell a little story, give you an example of how it can work. And there's really three pieces. There is foundational investment in the science that we need to apply to these problems along with that science, our technologies like artificial intelligence and big data and, you know, quite a number. Number two is an economic model where it's sustainable. The technology comes from private sector companies like us. I represent our research organization. Comes from academia, comes from government labs worldwide. Now, the development of the science is not free. The benefit in these green solutions is really measured in terms of societal cost and societal benefit. So as an example of how this has worked, in our lab in Beijing, and there's a session on it later this morning, we've been looking at the problem of air pollution, specifically particulate pollution. There's two measures, PM10, PM2.5, and this is the concentration of 10 and 2.5 nanometer particles in the air. And the work that we were doing was to say, can we forecast several days in advance what's going to happen so that the government, in this case, the city government of Beijing and other Chinese cities can prepare? And the short answer is yes. With the science, you can do the work. And the business economics that the Chinese Ministry of Environmental Protection in the city of Beijing did was remarkable. They asked the question, what is the cost to society? What is the benefit to society if we put this solution in place? And the consequence of that is we can use that delta to create a sustainable economic model for it to work. Let me just give one number and then I'll stop. One interesting number is in the last year in Beijing, actually broader China, the use of this technology has reduced the number of visits to hospitals by 1.65 million. That's a lot of cost, it's a lot of much happier people and it's a lot of benefit. And so this is how it works. It's private-public partnerships, business models that balance cost and benefit.
I've actually got a quick follow-up question for you. It's going to put you on the spot a little bit. But what are the main challenges, would you say, the main obstacles to making this partnership happen?
There's two, well, maybe three. There's continued development of the basic science. There is open-mindedness in terms of the governments and policymakers, in terms of business models that underwrite these solutions. And then there's the interesting challenge of putting together these communities in the context of policy, right? So this works when policymakers say, we will do it, recognizing the technology is available today and working together.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned open-mindedness because I think this is something that'll come up a lot over the next couple of days. Peteri, let me just step back and look slightly bigger at this, and this is something we discussed when we last met in Geneva. And that is the assumption almost by governments that business is going to pick up the slack here, pick up the 70% when we talk about emissions. Are they being too presumptuous? Are they putting too much pressure on the private sector?
I think what I have seen during the past 10 years has been major climate change, first among the policymakers, that the policymakers were ready to sign the Paris Agreement. That was a major change in this political environment. And what I have been also facing during recent years, I was also in the board of a fairly big energy company in the past, is that the private sector is ready to invest in climate mitigation and also climate adaptation and as we heard just, these air quality challenges as well. And that's very good news and the solutions and the capital to solve these problems has to come mainly from private sector. And we are moving in the right direction, but unfortunately, we are not moving there fast enough at the moment. But I hope that they will be speeding up these processes to be more successful.
Quick, quick final question to both of you. I know we got an intervention from the floor and again, it's a big one, this one. But was Paris oversold? Is the 2-degree number, we talk about 1.5%, but is even the 2-degree number severely challenged right now?
Yeah, I think that we have to be honest here. Paris was a very good starting point for solving the problem that we all are facing today and the future generations even more so. And at the moment, it seems that we are rather moving towards 3 to 5 degree warming by the end of this century than to this 1.5 to 2 degrees. So there's need to enhance the ambition level and also the solutions from private sector. They should be taken into use much faster than we have been doing so far. And we have to perhaps close some of these fossil energy power plants earlier and leave some of those resources unused.
Quick final question to you, Michael. Do you still feel shut out over a lot of these discussions? Is your seat at the table sturdy enough, as I asked at the beginning?
Oh, none at all, none at all.
So you don't feel shut out?
No, no, we did not feel shut out at all. We operate, you know, all over the world. I have a lab here in Nairobi and we participate locally, globally in these discussions. And one of the important things to understand here is, you know, the policy is in some sense global, the problems are always very local. And focus on dealing with these problems one at a time is how you chip away at the 2-degree mandate. two-degree mandate.
All right, gentlemen, stay there just for a second. I know we've got an intervention from the floor. Peter Jensen, Head Secretary of the International Resource Panel, I think you're out there somewhere. Yeah, right here, please.
Yeah, the International Resource Panel, of course, is very much around the knowledge creation around sustainable development, sustainable material flows. And I think from our observation linked to this, there is a recognition that there are different roles to be played for science and for policy and for business. But I think what I'm seeing in the work that we are doing as a panel, where we are very much on the science side, we are now trying to work much closer with the private sector. And we still see a reluctance among governments to really trust that the private sector is not just there to make money, but actually to make changes that help the long-term sustainability. So I think in that sense, there's still some work to be done, but I also see a lot of positive developments in having that trust established.
Peter, thank you very much indeed. There's a quick comment from here, please, very quickly.
Thank you. My name is Imad Ali. I'm from Egypt, and I represent the Arab Network for Environment and Development. Of course, it's a very good idea to bring the three together, the policy and the science and the decision-makers. But what happens that, you know, we can see very good examples, you know, like what we heard, but when it comes to the South, it becomes a real challenge because for the policymakers, they always find that if they bring the science and they want to do this, it is very expensive. Look at the NDCs coming, for example, for the Paris Agreement. It is all more than 90% waiting for funds to come from outside. And this means that, you know, even if we have some successful examples at the very global level, we still need to find the private sector coming at the South and with the technology, with the know-how, and help the South to make this kind of equation. It will never happen without changing the mentality of profit. It is not only profit as usual, it has to be profit differently. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Again, something that we're going to throw around. Gentlemen, thank you very much indeed for your intervention. I'm going to invite the next three up. Thank you very much indeed. All right, moving swiftly on. Hari Verhaas, Head of Global Public and Government Affairs at Philips Lighting, do come on up when I call your name. Diana Bogow is Chief Executive Officer, Millennium Engineers Enterprises, African Women Entrepreneurs' Energy Network. Come on up, Diana. And Walker Smith is Director, Office of Global Affairs and Policy at the EPA. Come on up as well, Walker. Yeah, round of applause, everybody. Let me kick it off with you, Diana, if I could. From what we've just heard, and especially the gentleman from Egypt and the comment about open-mindedness on the part of government, on the part of policymakers, how do you see this relationship, again, this interface, the reason for this event? How do you see that working?
I would like to say that the government plays a big role in terms of policy, but just not policy in terms of driven. Businesses actually, they create the business environment for sustainability. Now, through policymaking from the government, they allow even the ministries to support entrepreneurs or businesses to excel. They also provide the channels, the business channels, and without the government making the right policies, it means we don't even have the infrastructure to conduct that business. Now, that becomes a very big challenge. Using these platforms, it is where actually businesses can air out their problems, to give it to the government to make the right policies. There is a need for innovation in policymaking right now in order to bring about that sustainability in businesses.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know if you want to respond to that, anyone, that the comment just made, but we can come to you for your own comments in just a second. Okay, that'll be better. Give us Philips' take on, again, this relationship and how successfully it's working. We heard from IBM just now. They clearly don't feel shut out. They clearly feel they've got a seat at the table. Is that your experience, too?
What was the last part?
They feel they've got a seat at the table. Is that your experience, too?
Well, I think more and more because we see then, the way that I look at this, so all the work we do on efficiency, renewables, and all the other things collectively that we're working on is not just to bring about a quick fix and then we're back on track and we go back to capitalism as it was. I wrote a short article for COP23, and I called it "The Age of Sustainability." And I think one of the reasons why science, business, and policy, we need to work together is that we need to bring about a bigger paradigm shift, so where we move from a world where more is better to one where better is best, from invoicing hardware to leasing services, but also from this enormous focus on GDP, which is completely linear, to quality of life. And I think that is where the three of us come together. And if you then can also communicate that the solutions that are brought to the marketplace had, for us, sustainability is just another word for innovation. So they're more economical, they're better for the quality of a living environment, and they provide a better quality of service. So I think that's the whole change that collectively, I think where collectively we can create the momentum that is currently still missing.
Could you give us an example of something that is working particularly well for Philips right now in this sort of collaboration?
So, yeah, so is it still working?
Yeah.
So I believe, so I'm not put on this planet to just sell more LED light bulbs, although at COP23, we celebrated that we passed the 1 billion milestone, and we gave a trophy to Eric Solheim. But I think we're also collectively yet to do what is right. And in that sense, we see that energy efficiency has to do between half and two-thirds of the job to keep us below two degrees centigrade. And in that sense, together, when Achim Stein, who was still leading UN Environment, we created the Enlightened Project, so working for emerging developing countries, together with a lot of other companies, and also Steve Kukota from the Copper Association, and with Kandey Jumkala, and with Achim Stein, we created the Energy Efficiency Accelerator Platform so that collectively, in all sectors, we do what it takes. If you would like to take an example, to make it more tangible, from lighting, we see we've done a lot of street lighting, and we work with the World Council on City Data from Toronto, and they just analyzed that the new streetlights in San Francisco and LA, they reduce crime rate, not only they save half and two-thirds of energy, but also they reduce crime rate by 21%, so assaults and burglary, and they reduce nighttime traffic accident by 30%. So I think if we can communicate to the society at large that next to the energy bill and the carbon footprint, which we all know is really important, that these are benefits, that this future, this better future, this future of sustainability, so not revised capitalism or moderated socialism, but sustainability, that this is what is in for them, then I think that through their voting and buying behavior, they will push us and they will reward the leaders, but eventually have a move in bigger numbers to that better future.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Walker, let's come to you. Kiln pollution, lead in paint is an area that you've looked at for a while now. Let me start with the context question there. Is your government still prioritizing issues like this?
Very much so. You know, I'm a career civil servant, so I've been through many changes of administrations. And I think civil servants act the same way through any administration, which is, you know, explain the policy issues and what are the policy options and why it can be good policy. And one thing I think that happens in all US administrations is that it's very, it's public perception that we don't, that industry, science, and the government don't work together is just really incorrect, that we work with industry for policy solutions and science all the time, and lead paint's an excellent example. So I'm sort of a lead paint ambassador, but we have the Global Alliance for Lead Paint, UNEP and WHO are the secretariat, and EPA is the chair. And people ask me, didn't we sort of fix that problem 40 years ago? But we didn't. In the United States, the level of lead paint is 90 parts per million. In the developing world, 10,000, 20,000, 50,000 parts per million, but there's a cost-free alternatives, there's no reason. Industry is a big partner, but they want laws. That's another misperception, is that industry hates regulation, but it depends on the issue. And here, I think everybody believes that voluntary doesn't work. Poor people don't go pick out their paint, you know, in their schools, and industry wants a level playing field. So it's a perfect public-private partnership.
Okay, which is great to hear that this is working and has been working for a while, but I guess this is about getting that collaboration to the next level. Do you agree that we need to get it to the next level?
I absolutely do agree, but I think all of these problems are difficult. I mean, one of the reasons, one of the things we're doing here is using this forum to get this issue to the next level. What we have done is we have a model law, and what we're trying to do is tell ministers here through UNEA that your children, you know, are being deprived of their birthright intellectual capacity through lead paint, which, given the intractable problems we're trying to solve, we can do this one.
Are they listening?
I think that the lack of awareness is the biggest problem. And so we sponsored, well, along with Argentina and the African Union, a resolution on lead paint and lead batteries. But with lead paint, we want to work with ministers to get a law. We have a tool. We have the American Bar Association willing to help. And I'd like all the ministers to go home and say, let's fix this problem.
Great, well, there you go. That's one challenge that we'll come back to when we get to the closing plenary. Let me ask you, Diana, very quickly, what, Walker was talking about the conversations that she wants to have here. What are the conversations you want to have here in Nairobi over the next couple of days? What are the conversations you must have here?
One of them are implementation. What is the way forward? One, how are policymakers, meaning governments, are going to sit down with entrepreneurs, meaning businesses, together with the technology people and financial institutions, all together coming out with a clear implementation plan? If we come out and we don't have an implementation plan, it means the meeting was not effective. Something else I would like to say is that most of the time, we mumble a lot, and then in terms of government and policymaking, it doesn't go to the final stage. Now, one of the things is, the outcome of this meeting should go straight to each government and say that this is what is the outcome, and let's take it out from there, from regional, national levels, and excel from it, start practical activities from it. Instead of just using this meeting, we should even go deeper and specific with each nation and each country regionally.
Okay, very good. Very quickly, Hari.
Yes, so building on those comments, I think certainly we should really be clear about the ambition level, what I find, and the timeline, what I find intriguing, and think about it in this way, is what I see in the adult world, us, is when things are difficult, we say, well, let's do a little less, let's take a little longer, and we know that's not possible. When we were children, or when our children go to school, they got a set ambition level and a set timeline, and we just tell them, work harder, because when you pass your exam, you qualify for the next stage of education or of life, and we should do the same as adults. So then we move to the how question, and that is also what they answered, and that is implementation. We should be more forceful on implementations and not just write the reports on policy frameworks and everything, but then also implement them. And thirdly, what I mentioned before, collectively, let's say verbalize this vision of a better world so that we mobilize a larger part of society.
Very quickly, one sentence, are you optimistic, Walker?
I'm an optimist by heart, you know, despite, even when, you know, situation indicates otherwise, I always keep fighting forward. But I think one thing we need to do here is the international community has a bad reputation for being a talk shop, more talk, less action. We're really focused here on practical solutions, not just lead paint, air quality, how can we help countries with good air quality, low-cost air quality monitors? How can we help with water pollution? So really be thinking about practical solutions to move it forward.
Very good. And by the way, tomorrow, again, at the closing plenary, you know, we do want people to come to that with pledges, with solutions, with examples of the conversations they've had that will lead to some of the answers. Thank you very much. If you could just stay where you are just for a second, because I've got an intervention from Carlos Martin Novella from the Basel Rotterdam and Stockholm Convention.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, I'm working for the Basel Rotterdam and Stockholm Conventions, are the UN framework, legally binding framework to deal with waste and chemicals, the most nasty chemicals, those who are clearly killing people. And we have a very good example of how we work with science, with policymakers, with industry, when a product that has been invented for good purposes is identified, somebody claims that is killing, actually, that is nasty, then we submit this to a group of scientists, a panel, that gets consultation with the producers, with the industry, with the academics, with all those who has information, make a judgment, and then makes potentially some recommendations to the policymakers, to the member states, on either dismiss it or to impose some restrictions on the use. Sometimes what we find is that some products that are killing are also essential for sample process. Some products that are killing people are used also for medical equipment, that are saving lives. So what we do, we need to impose some deadlines, we need to look for alternatives, and looking for alternatives at the same time offers opportunities for innovation and for industry, which will finish the cycle of invention, creativity, and addressing environmental problems.
Okay, thank you very much, Giancarlo. Thank you to all of you as well. I'm going to call up the next three. Thank you very much indeed. All right, as they make their way off the stage, I'd like to invite Steve Kukota, Executive Director, International Copper Association, Li Fengting, Deputy Dean, IESD in College Environmental Science and Engineering at Tongji University, and Anne Bowser, Representative of the Global Citizen Science Alliance. Come on up to the stage, please.
Yes, we do, yeah. All right, thank you very much indeed, all of you. Let me kick it off with you, Anne. Again, a general thought on why you're here.
The vision of the global citizen science community is to engage members of the public in scientific research to help deliver the Sustainable Development Goals. We see the future of citizen science as emerging through partnership and through coordination. We already work with a number of government agencies. Environmental protection agencies around the world are natural partners. In addition, the US Department of State will start a new citizen science program with the goal of engaging 1 billion people in citizen science by Earth Day 2020. We are looking for other governments to help join and also launch their own local commitments. We're beginning to work with the business sector. We're looking for new business partners to help develop the technologies to collect and manage the vast quantities of open source data that is generated through citizen science. Lastly, we see this as an opportunity to build additional networking and coordination from within our core community. We hope that following discussions at this forum, we will see the launch of a new network promoting citizen science here in Africa. We are also taking the first steps towards formalizing a global citizen science consortium.
All right, Anne, thank you very much indeed. Quick follow-up question. As you have these discussions with policy, with business, and with science, who, you know, again, slightly leading, but who would you say are the most difficult actors to communicate with, to collaborate with, the most truculent actors to communicate with?
That's a difficult question. I would say that so far, we've done a very good job engaging government agencies, and these are relationships that we're increasingly successful in building. We need to do more work understanding and engaging stakeholders in the business community, which are decision-makers in their own right, as well as key partners to help provide resources such as technology.
All right. Li Fengting, again, I'll throw this to you and do use this as a platform to tell us, to lay out your stand. How optimistic are you that this sort of collaboration, to the level at which it needs to happen, is beginning to happen now?
Here, maybe I can give you a kiss about the cooperation in science, policy, business, and society in China. Everyone knows China have made the miracle for the economy. I think the university plays a very important role for the cooperation with the business, for the innovation science, and with the local society. I'm from Tongji University. I can give you a kiss for Tongji. In the past 10 years, Tongji Aluminum built an innovation zone around our campus, and the turnover a year is about $5 billion. It's very successful. At the beginning, the government offered funding, asset funding for the operation for the zone, but this model is very successful. It's very good for the university, it's very good for the local community and the local government, and for this zone, and the turnover is about $5 billion. It's up to about 1.1 GDP for total GDP of Shanghai. So this is a very good cooperation model for the science, industry, business, and society.
You know, I'll come back to you, but a lot of statistics, Steve, thrown out there always at these sorts of forums, you know, this is what we could achieve, you know, this is the goal. The conversations need to happen to achieve that, and then we need to act on those. Are you seeing anything that suggests to you that that is going to move forward?
Absolutely. I mean, we've had a number of positive speakers already about how there's strong engagement with the private sector, with business. I'd say even just in the last few years, you're seeing much more significant recognition. you're seeing much more significant recognition that the private sector needs to have a seat at the table and not separate from the discussion. I mean, we've been quite successful in building partnerships around these Sustainable Development Goals. I think at the risk of sounding immodest, I will, I do represent the copper industry, but we're probably as closely aligned with the Sustainable Development agenda from a materials perspective than perhaps any other material. So this type of forum, we see as an opportunity to build new partnerships and to scale up existing ones on technologies that exist today that can be making a positive impact on sustainable development.
Which governments do you want to talk to? Who's at the top of your list?
I think my primary areas at this point are in energy efficiency and in aquaculture. And I think that the developing world is really where we need to make strides. If you talk about energy efficiency, if you look at the OECD, there are energy efficiency policies in place for the products that you're using in your home and that we're using in our businesses. But if you look at where energy growth is happening, it's in the developing world. And if you look at a map on the status of policies on, for example, energy efficiency, you see it's largely absent in the developing world. So we've formed a partnership with UN Environment called United for Efficiency. Harry Verhar from Philips mentioned the Sustainable Energy for All Accelerator Platforms that we work in, in that space, trying to bring the developing world countries up to pace with technologies.
You've brought along a part of your product here. Just very quickly, tell us what that is. And, you know, maybe wrap that into an example of how the sort of collaboration is working.
Right, so, I mean, food supply obviously is a critical issue. And aquaculture makes a significant contribution to food in our diets. And that's an industry that needs to about double its production between now and 2030, according to the World Bank. But it's an industry that's in a state of disrepair. We've developed a technology based on copper that's environmentally friendly, sustainable, climate resilient, and 100% recyclable. And I invite you at 2:30 to come to a panel on Feeding the World Without Killing the Planet, and I'll go into much more detail. But this is what it looks like.
Okay, thank you. Li Fengting, let me ask you, in which areas you are seeing the most progress now in terms of, again, the interface, in terms of the collaboration, in terms of the cooperation?
Just I mentioned about the model for the university. I think for the, why China economy is so successful, I think the university place are very important in China. This is a very good model for the developing countries. We have a colleague from Tsinghua University, from Chinese Academy. And so I think the university in the past 30, 20 years is very successful. It's a platform for the policy innovation business. As in China, the top university is the think tank for the government. It's a place very important. This model is different from other countries. So that's why China is so successful. That's the main reason, I think.
Okay, quick final question to you, Anne. You're based in the US, are you?
I am.
You're based in the US. Now, obviously, we have to talk about the US context, you know, at some point over the next couple of days. How much more complicated has that made it for what you're trying to achieve?
That's an interesting question. We saw a lot of support for citizen science under the Obama administration, especially some high-level executive orders. We also passed the Crowdsourcing in Citizen Science Act as part of America Competes, which was signed into law in January of this year. A lot of federal agencies are still engaged and still committed to citizen science. There's an active federal community of practice for crowdsourcing in citizen science. The General Services Administration supports citizenscience.gov as a persistent platform. And the new administration is committed to open data. So I'm cautiously optimistic about the ability of citizen science to persevere.
All right, I'm going to let all three of you go. Thank you very much indeed to the three of you. Thank you. Right, can I please invite up Tip O'Neill, Head of Delegation of the International Fertilizer Association; Liu Yonglong, Third World Academy of Sciences Fellow; and Alice Cordia, Environment Secretary here in Kenya. Thank you very much indeed to all of you. And Alice Cordia, I'm going to start with you, with your policy hat on. Just talk to us about what you think we can achieve here in Nairobi over the next couple of days.
Thank you very much. I think this is a very good opportunity for us to debate the interface between science, policy, and business. And I think we are going to consolidate knowledge and experience regarding how we can collectively act and achieve the reduction of short-lived climate pollutants in particular, which is very relevant to the response to the air pollution issues. But allow me just to say that, from my perspective, to have a healthy partnership and sustainable collaboration between science, policy, and the private sector, we must ensure that science responds to business needs. And science informs policy. And the policy in turn should ensure that there is adequate financing of science to generate timely, quality, quantitative data so that business is able to respond to consumer needs. In Kenya, for example, locally, we have quarterly meetings between the Kenya Private Sector Alliance and the government. And that round table is actually chaired by the president. So it's a very high-level policy impact forum. But globally, Kenya is also very actively engaged in informing policy content of entities like International Resource Panel, Global Green Growth Knowledge Platform, Ecosystems-Based Adaptation for Food Security in Africa Assembly, and the Climate and Clean Air Coalition. I want to emphasize the role of CCSC because, in Africa, you'll all agree, most of our communities, 70%, still depend on wood fuel, that is firewood and charcoal, as the primary source of energy for cooking, which means there is high emission of black carbon, which is soot. And also because we also depend so much on livestock, there's high emission of methane. These are short-lived climate pollutants, which if ignored, and we only focus on the major greenhouse gases, we are going to lose it. The world is going to be polluted, and we are going to have problems. Now, the business sector has a big role here because with the interface of science, we can have innovation design of products and services that meet the needs of the society sustainably.
Let me ask you a quick follow-up question, and then I'll get to you two. How can policy better empower the business sector?
That's a very good question. And we should have policies that are friendly to the business sector. What do the business people want? They want to make profits, but they also want to be socially and environmentally responsive and responsible. And for that reason, we need policies that provide favorable tax regimes, favorable access to finance for business. I mean, any business requires a healthy balance sheet to sustain itself. And therefore, our policies must respond to the needs of the business to be sustainable.
Yes. Let me come to you on that point, and maybe you can use that, again, as a platform to tell us what you want to tell us. But I mentioned earlier in one of the groups the pressure that is being put on business to come up with, or to pick up the slack, if you like. With that in mind, what is the best sort of empowering that we could see from policy for business?
It seems to me it's most important how can scientists collect strong evidence about the emerging scientific issues, and also identify the sources, then to inform the policymakers. And for policymakers, it's most important to prioritize their major missions for pollution control, and especially prevention of the source. And also, very, very important, how can we set up very good regulations? Especially the laws, that's what you say, that how can we create a very good environment for business people? And then, how can we create a very favorable environment? And, for example, tax rebate policies or governmental procurement? Such kind of policy tools be very good and to promote the environmental-friendly business industries. And that's a very good relationship. The other one, for policymakers, is also very important for them to have some academic background. And fortunately for China, it's very good because we have so many officials who have very strong engineering background. And we get some scientists elected as senior officials. So know something about their science.
So you're saying government needs to better understand the issue?
That's right, that's right. You know, for the policymakers, of course, they need to know something about the science. All right? Otherwise, how can you educate them, right? That's very important to have to integrate both the natural sciences and social sciences. All right? And we provide them with very strong evidence for scientists. I'm a keeper asking myself how scientists can really working together with business people and with policymakers. We have a very good compilation, you know. We have three people from different, you know, communities here. And that's very important, how can we really, you know, to set up some of the programs which to encourage those three communities to really work together. All right? For example, for implementation of the SDGs and also some environmental protection programs, government in China just provides some seed money. Then to invite the business people and business to involve in investment.
Yep.
Then scientists can work together with them to identify the major issues and provide the very good and suitable policy recommendations. That's it.
Very useful. Thank you very much indeed. Tip, let me come to you. I mean, with that in mind, should we be looking to the Chinese example? Is that collaboration working nearly as well as it should be in your country?
Well, my vision's global, because I, here representing the International Fertilizer Business, International Fertilizer Association, and my business as well is international. I'm a CEO of an international distributor of fertilizer. We've seen in China, of course, even since July, a major change because of government policy. You know, we have conventions all the time. We just had an IFa convention in Shanghai, and we could see the sky. I'd never seen the sky, three and four days in a row. That's the result of government policy. And they've also, they've set, as well, you've heard earlier in the discussions, about level playing field. There wasn't a level playing field in China. Now there's a level playing field. And so those that were freely polluting and taking advantage of those reduced costs now aren't in business anymore. And those that are responsible, producers of product and distributors and farmers, right through the supply chain, they're all operating on a world scale, more level playing field.
And that is the way to achieve sustainability?
That's certainly the first step.
And what comes after that?
There needs to be a cultural change. It needs to be driven right through the agricultural supply chain, from the producers of the inputs through to distributors like ourselves, to the farmer. It needs to be an educational process. In our own company, we strongly believe in zero emissions. We handle dusty product, we handle product that can leak, gaseous products. We absolutely don't want to lose a molecule. And we lean on our suppliers of services at both ends, trying to set an example. And we see more and more today where our customers, as well as our regulators in all these nation-states, are interested in encouraging our industry to improve our culture.
All right. Look, I've got a very wary hour in the time. I'm going to move us on. Thank you all very much indeed for your interventions. Thank you very much indeed. All right, just one quick announcement. By the way, I know you all thought that we were supposed to finish at 12:30 and sessions then continue. We're pushing everything back in the day, so we're going to run a little bit longer. I've got two more of these groups before we have a quick close, so do bear with us. I'll come to your interventions again in just a second. But let me, in the meantime, invite, there are four people in this one, actually. Erica Key, Executive Director, Belmont Forum; Sneha Shah, Managing Director of Africa at Thomson Reuters; Jim Donovan, Chair and CEO of the Global CEO Alliance; and Ado Lomus, Deputy Minister of the Environment for Estonia. Estonia, of course, has the EU presidency. Please, come on up to the stage. All right, thank you very much indeed. Ado Lomus, let me start with you. I mentioned you hold the presidency. It's wonderful to have you here with us. From what you've heard so far from the policy side, but also importantly, from the business and the science side, about the policy side, what are your thoughts?
First thought is that there should not be a contradiction between policymakers and the business. And policymakers should find out the ways how to communicate with the business and how to give the incentives, both in a regulatory way, which is the very hard way, but there are possibilities. For example, regulatory relief, incentives in financial terms, in financial instruments, et cetera. So policymakers can easily communicate with the business, addressing their interests. One concrete measure in Europe, what we are using is the green public procurement, for example. So if we have indicated what are the sustainable products, sustainable services, sustainability overall, then on the government levels, policymakers can set the criteria and tendering with this, because business, by the end of today, needs to earn profit. And if they find that there are new criteria, policymakers and the governments are interested in new models, new services, new products, then they are starting to transition. So there are several mechanisms where the policymakers and the governments can give, and address their interest to make a transition or to make a change.
Are we moving forward? Are we making progress? I mean, I know there are things, very positive things, happening in your own country, but at the EU level, it's more difficult. Give us your assessment.
Yes, definitely. And during Estonian presidency, we don't have an aim that now we fix the world and we fix the Europe. But Europe is definitely in transition in circular economy. The business model, what should not be, to be frightened of, but it should be beneficial for the business. So the aim of this and the main idea is that the business find out that to be sustainable, to follow the environmental regulations, to reduce the pollution, to be more resource efficient, by the end of the day, it's more profitable. And this transition is ongoing, and we can say that resource productivity is quite good in Europe and its member states. But the transition has to go on. And to meet 2030 targets, then we have to push from the government's level and also to change the behavior on the business level.
All right. Deputy Minister, thank you very much indeed. Jim, let me bring you in here. And this is, again, this is something we talked about in Geneva recently. The businesses you represent, how under the gun do they feel? How defensive are they when they come to meetings like this one, forums like this one? And how, I guess, how damaging is that defensive posture when we're trying to move this forward?
Well, first of all, thank you for having me here, UN for Environment and all the members. Business is looking for a clear value proposition. It's looking for guidance from the government. You know, it's often misunderstood that laws, regulations, are looked upon by business as something that we don't want. We're looking for clear guidance in which to build business plans. Global CEO Alliance was formed really from the basis of understanding that we are at a historic point in society where we have to come up with a new relationship to resources. It really is a math problem. And usually, when somebody says it's a math problem, you know, something good doesn't follow from that. Business, science, policymakers, we're all in this together. We're looking for clear direction from the policymakers based upon solid science, solid work, so that we can adjust business models. We believe that's going to be done through continued collaboration with coalitions, associations that are using incremental steps. In addition to... associations that are using incremental steps in addition to innovation and data. We are on the cusp of, we are in the middle of a data revolution where tools exist in the private sector that we need to bring in and involve the member states so that we can start to make better decisions with these tools.
You know, I talked before about policy empowering business. I want to ask you about, again, you represent a lot of businesses. What should engagement look like? And how flexible should engagement be? And to what extent does that really need to change as we move forward?
We need to be, for lack of a better description, we need a sandbox in which science, policymakers and business can engage and look to innovate and understand that innovation also has failings. And it's failings on the entrepreneurial side or on the business side is actually part of the business model. That is difficult to bring into policy or sort of the science side to understand that that is part of the evolution fast, fail fast, fail forward, let's evolve this model. We don't have all the time in the world to change society's relationship to resources. What can we do? Business stands ready to make change. We are looking for clear guidance. Obviously, we have shareholders, stakeholders that need to be addressed, but we also need to bring a story back to them to have them understand why we're making these changes, why we're making these investments that may have a longer horizon, but allow the business model to be sustainable.
Yeah. Erica, representing, of course, Belmont Forum, how hopeful are you when you hear what you've heard so far this morning?
I'm incredibly helpful, but then I'm a yes person and I work for a yes organization. And I'll say yes all day long.
I didn't say helpful, hopeful.
Hopeful, I am hopeful in that I'm looking to this forum as a place to say yes to new partners, to be that sandbox that brings the Science Policy Business Forum together because it's about co-development and co-implementation. That's how you bring all of these threads together and you end up with a product that people are generally agreeable with. We do recognize the need for innovation. With that comes failure, but also an understanding of the tolerance level of vulnerable populations. We can't just experiment on them. If they're in the sandbox with us, then they have that voice. So I am extremely hopeful that we will gather together new partners within this sandbox here today to engage in this space where we welcome those collaborations, we continue to support them in sustainable ways, and that we never come to a point where we have to say no to someone. We say yes if you're transparent, yes if you include stakeholders, yes if your nature-based solutions includes social scientists in their development.
So I can come to you tomorrow at the close and we can find out where this stance has gotten you.
Yes.
Good. Sneha, talk to us a little bit about our, I say our, Thomson Reuters, which of course, under which the Reuters news organization sits. Talk to us about what we're doing in this space and the sort of collaboration we're doing.
So yeah, so I'll start by saying that this is a very meaningful forum in Africa. And as a Kenyan, I feel incredibly hopeful about today's forum because I do believe that Africa has a better way of doing things and an opportunity to do things differently than the rest of the world has done. So when we look at Europe or America, we're talking a lot about undoing the years of development and sort of industrialization in terms of getting to a better place, whereas actually here, we've got an opportunity to leapfrog. And if you look at new and emerging tech and data, you can actually see how Africa's already doing that. So for example, land and blockchain is a real thing. There are real pilots right now, today, on this continent about giving people land rights through blockchain. And in the DRC, which is the world's second largest rainforest, people are using AI to help decide where the deforestation will have the biggest impact on local communities. And so there are real examples on this continent that are inspirational, hopeful, that can show a better way, and I hope not just for Africa, but actually for the world. And so I think that's where I'd like to start. And then as to where Thomson Reuters comes in, we believe that through data, information sharing and partnership, as a lot of the other sort of panelists have said, that there is the better way and we can all move forward much faster together. So one of the examples of how we're doing this, we've just released a sort of a global greenhouse emissions report that focuses on the top 250 emitters around the world. Now, these top 250 account for one-third of global emissions. So if you can do something with them, you can actually make a substantive impact in the world. And what we found is that the myth is that when you sort of disclose about what you're doing, it's going to have a negative impact on your business performance or people's view of the company. But actually, that's not true. So as we looked at these 250, the 30% that actually were disclosing, not only were able to move quickly towards new business models, but actually significantly outperformed their peers on a global basis. And one example is Xcel Energy. So from 2005, they've reduced their global emissions by 24%, but actually they're now outperforming their peers at 106% performance versus 47% in the rest of their industry. So it's about sending this message that there's a better way if we all go together and if we're more transparent in the way that we share and collect and transfer data.
All right. Thank you very much indeed, Sneha. And I'd like to add here, I did an event recently with Christiana Figueres, and one thing we launched at the end of that event was our own Dare to Ask campaign. It sounds very simple, but I think this is a big, big part of this. We need to be able to ask everyone, CEOs, our parents, our grandparents, and our kids need to be asking us these questions, Dare to Ask, what are you doing? What are you doing in your own little space to move this whole piece forward? Quick final question, Erica, to you. What would success of this forum look like?
Definition of added value coming from all of the various perspectives here, metrics for success, what is sustainability? What are the solution parameters that we're trying to address? But mostly that partnership to grow the resources, to grow the conversation, and to be able to support more activity. If we leverage what we're already doing, bring in a bit of new catalyzation funding, there's so much that we could achieve. And we are trying to be that platform and that sandbox to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed to all of you. Thank you very much. All right. We've got one more trio coming up, but before I do that, I want to go to Walter Jennings, who's the VP of Comms at Huawei. I know you had a, yes, you had a...
Yes, good afternoon, and thank you very much. On behalf of Huawei Technologies, we're delighted to be here and to be discussing business, science and government collaboration. For those of you who aren't aware, Huawei is the world's largest employee-owned company, headquartered out of Shenzhen. And as a private company, we run to a 20-year strategy and therefore we're able to take a longer viewpoint. And the three founding principles of Huawei are innovative, collaborative and responsible. On innovation, in 2016, we spent $11 billion US dollars on research and development, and 40% of our 200,000 employees are full-time in research and development. Now, much of that has a pure commercial sense, but other in that is pure science as well as science looking for greater power efficiency and energy efficiency. You may know Huawei for the great smartphones we develop, but we develop the infrastructure as well. We just want to say that collaboration is what will drive environmental savings and we drive that through our supply chain and we appreciate the collaboration that we witness here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Walter. Right, let me invite our final three speakers up. We've got Chen Xiaowu, Chairman of the China Society of Entrepreneurs for Ecology Foundation, Luca Meili, Director of Environmental Policy at NL, and Thomas Lovejoy, Senior Fellow at UN Foundation. Come on up. Luca, let me kick it off with you. I believe I met one of your colleagues, Head of Sustainability in Geneva, because yours is a company that has made great headway in this space. With that in mind, as the context here, give us your thoughts on how you believe we can progress, the sorts of conversations you want to have this week, and the sort of, I guess, what NL can teach others in this room who haven't reached that stage yet?
Yes, NL undertook a strong strategic change in the last years because we moved from bringing a traditional utility to being a utility that is completely focused on sustainability, let me say, because we focus all the new CapEx on renewable energies. Therefore, we don't invest anymore in thermal production, but just in renewable energy. We will invest more than 8 billion in the next three years. And the change is not limited to this because we also reconsider our approach to the interaction with outside world. We adopted what we call an open power approach, that is, we open up our collaboration to outside world with NGOs, with research center, with startup, with all the other companies as well. And we embedded sustainability within our processes. Therefore, for example, we have this approach of create share value. That means that from the real beginning, when we start a new project somewhere in the world, we engage with local communities, local stakeholders to address sustainability from the real beginning because it is the only way to have it in a long-term perspective.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed, Luca. Chen Xiaowu, and I believe you're going to do this in English. If you do need to switch to Chinese, I think we have simultaneous translation. I just don't think we're going to be able to hear you.
I do, yes.
Please, and I thank you. Yeah, give us your perspective with the entrepreneur's perspective, I guess, hat on, as to what you hope this will achieve over the next two days.
Actually, I'm from S E E. S E E means Society of Entrepreneurial and Eco Origin. We founded in 2003. Actually, we have worked 13 years in China. We work for three respect in Eco Origin. The first one is the certification control. Another aspect is ecosystem conservation. And the third aspect we work is green supply chain and pollution prevention. Actually, now we focus on that. Last year, we founded the, called the Green Supply Chain in Real Estate Industry in China. We're actually till now, 89 real estate companies representing sales revenue of 1. trillion, trillion IMB in 2016, or about 17th percent of the China real estate whole sector have. They have all joined the program, more than 2,000 upstream suppliers were engaged. They all take part in the project, green supply chain in real estate in China. Actually, from research report with about 40% from that of real estate and construction industry, China's carbon emission accounts for roughly 20% of the world's. This means the China real estate industry accounts approximately 80% of the entire world's carbon emission. That's our project, the meaning, that's the key meaning. So we were, we were the, we set up called the White List of Green Supply Chain in Real Estate Industry. They were for just like steel, cement, glass and paint, preventing water pollution through chromium-free penetration for aluminum and avoiding many, many other things. So I cannot just speak English.
No, no, you're doing, that's great. Can I stop you just there? Because I want to bring Thomas Lovejoy in. I'm going to kind of ask you to sort of look at a few things, Thomas. Based on what we've heard from China, from the US, and on the policy side, we've heard from businesses as well, from the EC, from the deputy minister in Estonia, you know, who's getting this right? Who can hold the candle at the front of the queue, if you like?
So I think there are actually many people getting and many industries and governments, et cetera, getting parts of this right. But there is one really big opportunity, which is unbeknownst to most, there is a significant amount of CO2 in the atmosphere which has come from centuries of destruction and degradation of ecosystems. And if we were to really engage in ecosystem restoration, all of which has lots of reasons to do anyway, it literally could pull back about 0.4 degrees of potential climate warming out of the atmosphere before it happens. And that is riddled with job opportunities and economic opportunities. And I think in the course of the next couple of days, we should figure out how to get it started.
Who is prepared to pay to do that?
Well, if you start thinking about what you get when you do reforestation, you get improved watersheds, right? You could also have production forests. If you restore grazing lands, you get better grazing. If you essentially restore agricultural systems to ones that accumulate carbon, you get increased soil fertility. So there is actually payback built into doing all of those things despite the carbon aspect of it.
You know, one thing, Luca, I want to bring you back in here. One thing that we haven't really talked about is proving to business the sustainability premium, proving the business case for doing this stuff. And I spoke to your colleague, as I said, in Geneva about this. You know, business needs to become synonymous with sustainability. How do you do that at NL?
Well, on one side, you have to consider what are the main trends in the world now. So you see that there is strong technological innovation, there is a high critical environmental situation. So you can expect that the business will have to develop a solution, also taking this into account. So if you consider your business 10 years ahead, you have to develop something that is in line, in touch with these needs. So actually, it is to understand what, actually, the fact that the business have developed solution that are also in line with the main critical aspects we are to face.
You know, one thing we haven't talked about, and apologies if I'm putting you on the spot, if no one up here wants to respond to this, maybe someone in the audience can, but that is financing this stuff, you know, green bonds, you know, it's something that I've talked a lot about recently. And, you know, clearly, we're going in the right direction here, you know, but we're also talking about getting pension funds and asset managers to change their mentalities and their allocations. How much progress are we making on this front, would you say?
So my guess is, you know, that we're making some progress, but it's not at the scale we need to make. But think about the fact that New York City actually chose to restore its watershed rather than build a water treatment plant, and it was 10% of the cost. So if we do some smart economic calculation here, we can get this started quickly.
Does anyone else want to say anything on green finance and getting central banks involved? I think we've seen some great examples in the developing world.
I think there is a strong engagement going on in many respects. Of course, it's not homogeneous, but for example, I think to Bloomberg that has published guidelines for company to make public what will be the impact of climate change on their financially, financial file. So I mean, there is a strong action in many respects.
Okay. Quick final word from you, and then we'll wrap this one up.
I think in the near future, we expect that by 2020, more enterprises will join the green supply chain program with an overall sales volume accounting for 40% of that of the industry. that of the industry. We can reduce annual CO2 emission by 50 million tons through the improvement of per-unit annual consumption of steel, cement, aluminum, and iron. By 2025, the Green Supply Chain program is expected to have reduced emissions totaling 819 million tons of CO2.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you, gentlemen, to all of you. That actually wraps up this little portion of it. We've got one final piece to go, and I want to thank all of our speakers for bearing with me and for their candor and their patience with this format, but it does keep things moving. I want to have some closing remarks now, and I want to invite UN Environment Chief Scientist and the host of this event, Jian Lu, up onto the stage. What I'm going to do, Jian, is I'm going to pose two or three questions to you, just to sort of rein you in a little bit, yeah? And the first one, it's quite a big one. UN Environment sees itself as a catalyst, clearly sees itself as a catalyst for positive action on the environment. In what ways do you see this forum as a game changer? And how would success look for you for this forum?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the question, and good morning, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, your excellencies. Let me, on behalf of the UN Environment, welcome you again. This is our first, our first forum of its kind, and we will continue as an annual event in the future. This is the first thing. Why I say this? Because from the previous speeches, we're just in the hall, and we should continue this. It's not only the sum of one event that matters, but it's something that we all of us together, and I think a lot of my previous speakers have had our role. And I need to present before we come to the point, the three of facts. Number one, the problem is clear. We are very quickly sliding to the tipping point beyond which our earth will not be functioning normally for us. Okay? Let me give you also second message. Our capacity to restore and to put the earth back on track is great. It's great. The great potential is there, even the technological potentials, they are all out there. And number three, each one of the societies, the science community, the IPCC, and the policy community, the UNFCC process, the UN Environment Assembly, and the business sector, they're looking for green opportunities for invest, to have a promising business. But how could we get there? How could we get there? And everybody, everybody in each society basically are playing very hard, the solos, the solos. And now, the problem is so big that we could not afford continue playing these solos. We need to have the biggest ever concert in this world. The concert that matters for each one of us. And that's why we have this forum. This is the sole purpose of this forum, that we bring everybody together to play that concert, in which we should no longer mainstreaming the environment into anything, but we need to prioritize them, prioritize them to all decision-making process and put on the top. Think about each year, 12.6 million people are dying of pollution, which equals to four double deaths, 0.4747, crashing each hour on the ground. Can you bear with that? Can we bear with that? So mainstreaming is no longer the word for UN environment, I can say this for sure. And I hope that mainstream is no longer tolerable for all of you. It's a matter of prioritization, it's a matter of putting environment on top of any other issues. And also in that process, we really wish to catalyze the current process that we put together our efforts to develop ourselves, this sort of corporate leadership, rather than always look up at the political leadership, but we need the intellectual leadership from science community, we need the entrepreneurship, we need the championship from the media. And that's where we should be, that's where we should be doing, together. And in that process, you will become from a champion to a leader, each one of you. And in that process, you will find the green solutions yourself at your fingertips. And in that process, we ensure that the stewardship of each every citizen in this world, in this, on this earth, to play their part. So that is what really I'm aiming for, for this forum.
One very quick final comment. You know, obviously, the private sector is such a key player here, and given their participation, what is the message you think we need to take to the UNEA III Forum, which begins on Monday?
Thank you. Of course, there are a lot of points that have been made by my previous speakers. And I would think just one thing that I'm looking for. Our business colleagues, you don't have to wait for the negotiations, what are the outcomes of negotiations. You don't have to wait, what is national policy? You don't have to wait, what is the national plan? And what you do, you take your own leadership. Where going green, there's no way back. Where going green, there you can make your right business, you can support the society and make things happen on the ground. And you basically contribute, you could contribute much more than you expect, much more you can imagine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Jian Lu. All right. That pretty much wraps it up. I've got 30 seconds of comments just to close this session. I really want to thank our speakers for bearing with us with this format. You know, I think it's a format that worked well because it keeps things moving. We've put a lot on the table, plenty of food for thought. I'm sure everyone is ready for a freshman, so I'll let you out in just a sec. But I do want to reiterate a few things that I said at the start. This is billed as a UN-facilitated event, not a UN event. I think that's an important point that Shereen made as well, one that affords everyone here the opportunity to have their voices heard and to shape their own engagements, as I said. Tomorrow at 13:30, I'm going to host the closing plenary. There's plenty happening in between, but when we meet at that close, I would like to challenge you, as I've said a couple of times over the last hour and a half, to come with a renewed sense of how we can take this whole process forward, with a pledge, if you like, a goal, a solution that we can revisit when we next meet. This process over these couple of days, I've seen described in the literature as an incubator, an accelerator, words we use a lot when we talk about entrepreneurs and startups and new businesses. I guess that's the sort of mentality we want to bring out here. It's hard to avoid sounding like a schoolteacher, but I guess we're holding you accountable here. And provided we all remain open-minded, which was something, a phrase that was used a couple of times today, together, I think we can all make something happen. Enjoy your lunch, enjoy the rest of the day and tomorrow, and I'll see you at the closing plenary. Thank you very much.[1739.63][1739.63]